It is Thursday, April 27th, 6 o'clock, and this session of the Huntsville City Council is called to order. We welcome everyone who's joined us tonight. We will begin our council meeting with an invocation by Reverend Carol Landry of the Unity Church on the Mountain, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Russell. Everyone, please stand if you are able for the invocation. Reverend Landry.
Let's just all breathe together for a moment. Just breathe together. Know our oneness. Know our oneness as one human family. Know our oneness as this community. As we know this, as we relax into opening to that divine power that we call God, the God of our understanding, we open ourselves to receive the blessings that are already available to us, the blessing of wisdom. Oh Spirit, let us be wise in these moments together. Oh Spirit, let us approach each other with love, knowing that the love that we give is the love that we receive. Oh Spirit, be with us in peace. That peace within our own soul, that peace within our families, the peace within our community. Oh Spirit, we open ourselves. We accept these blessings. And as we go forward, let us listen. Listen deeply. Let us speak impeccably. Let us know that our words here tonight have meaning. And as we close this time of opening with you again, let us breathe together. Let us know we are one, and so it is. Amen.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Landry and thank you Councilman Russell. You have received the minutes of the regular meeting held April 13th, 2017. Are there any changes or additions, corrections to the meeting? Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved. You have also received the minutes of a special session held April 20th, 2017. Are there changes or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved. We have a number of special resolutions from the mayor tonight, a presentation of a meritorious service medal, presentation of the Star 99 CAFI Student of the Month, and a proclamation declaring the month of May is Building Safety Month. Mayor Battle, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam President. If I could ask that Chief McMurray come forward. I think we have an officer out there that we would like to recognize tonight. Chief, please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor, and I've brought Deputy Chief Giles with me. And Officer Nelson is the officer I'd like to bring your attention to. Officer Michael Nelson is a 10-year veteran with Huntsville Police Department. And Captain Jeff Rice, thank you for coming up here also. You'll notice the police officers in the back. That's his entire team of the DUI Task Force. And they're here to see this recognition as well. It's very difficult to get a meritorious service award. We gave one away last year. You have to get six captains to approve the award, which is very difficult. They don't agree on anything. And then they have to go to two deputy chiefs and say, and then you gotta get them to agree. And then they gotta bring it to me, and I have to agree. And so we don't give these off. But listen to what Officer Nelson has done. 10 years with the department. He's the first drug recognition expert for Huntsville PD. He is the only drug recognition expert in the state that works with the Department of Alabama Forensic Sciences to conduct a field study regarding alternatives to blood toxicology for determining impairment. It's very complicated, but simply put, these highly trained individuals can actually take a person who thinks they may be drunk and actually tell what kind of drug is in their system by giving them some field tests and some examinations on the street. And it takes months and months of training and a lot of education. We have to send these officers off to another city to actually go through a field training exercise. And he's our first. But let me tell you what he did. He leads the state in the number of evaluations by over 200%, including agencies with several DREs. He was responsible for increasing the overall state number of drug influence evaluations by 28%. He did that just by himself. The entire state average went up 28%. Because of his activity, he was able to talk other DUI officers into going to the school and help them. We now have four drug recognition experts out here at night helping us put DUIs, because it's very important that we know if you're drunk or you impaired. Are you taking some medications? You know, is there a way we can get you some help? Not everybody has to go to jail. Some people just need treatment. So it's really important that these people are trained to this level. Officer Nelson, we're proud to give you this meritorious service award at this time for becoming a drug recognition expert and pushing these other officers to do the same. And Sergeant Nelson and all the DUI Task Forces back here as well. Congratulations.
If I could ask Kenny Anderson to come forward. I think we have a CAFI Youth of the Month that we want to recognize tonight. And the whole CAFI team, if y'all would come forward.
Thank you, Mayor. If Malik would come forward at this time. And if you're here supporting Malik tonight, I'd ask you to just stand in support of this tremendous award tonight. We have another outstanding nominee for this award. He is Malik Williams, a 12th grade graduating senior. That's important, because all seniors are not graduating seniors. He's a graduating senior with a 4.196 grade point average. And I'm gonna step just a little closer to him, so some of that knowledge can rub off. He's a National Honor Society member, student government member, a DAC Committee member, senior council member, and he plays on the football team. He's an active member of the North Alabama Center for Educational Excellence, Educational Talent Search Program. And I see Dr. Davis here tonight. Thank you for being here. And he has been accepted to the following universities: Georgetown University, Tuskegee University, Clark Atlanta University, and many others. For those and many more accomplishments, Malik Williams is the April 2017 CAFI Young Citizen of the Month. And Malik, I have some people here that are gonna give you some tokens of appreciation. I'll start with Dr. Harry Hobbs.
Well, Malik, we're so proud of you. And on behalf of Huntsville Utilities and our CEO, Mr. Tony Orns, we have a great bag right there with something for your mind, body, and soul inside there. And there's a little card, don't spend it all in the same place. And because it's seasonal, there's something in there for you when you go to the beach as well. Okay? Surprise! And also, this bag is from our great partners at Rocket City Broadcasting Radio Station. They're setting up for Panoply, so they asked me to give that. And more to follow, TV interviews and radio and all that good stuff as well. And by the way, you dress pretty good. Great job, sir.
Hey, good evening, everyone. My name is James Kelly. I am the Assistant Director for Recruitment at Oakwood University. And Malik, we would love for you to add Oakwood to that list of schools you've been accepted to. In here, it shows what you qualify for scholarship-wise, and we put a lot of goodies in here. So to sway your decision.
Well, good afternoon, Malik. Oh my gosh, this is so exciting for me to present this to you. My name is Eureka, and I'm the incoming president for the Optimists Club of Huntsville. And this is just a little token of our appreciation that I would like to present to you for doing such a wonderful job. Our organization has served the community for over 70 years. And it is a pleasure to see you again, to travel with you on cap and gown, to Georgetown University, to be here to present this to you. So we're so excited, and thank you for doing a great job.
Malik, on behalf of the Huntsville Police Department, all of the officers of the Huntsville Police Department and employees, and on behalf of Chief Mark McMurray, we present you this certificate in recognition of exemplary service to our community. So keep up the good work.
And Malik, we have for you a coin from the city. And the coin from the city is given to people who have done great things to help make this a better city, and you have definitely done that. Thank you so much, and congratulations. Thank you so much to the whole CAFI crew. We appreciate it. And now, if I could have Randy Cunningham and Shane Davis come forward. We have a very special proclamation for this month. This month is May, and it is known as Building Safety Month. And these are the guys who are in charge of making sure that our buildings are safe. And Randy has his whole team with him. Randy, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
All right, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. We appreciate this opportunity to raise awareness for individuals, business owners, to maintain and sustain buildings that they currently own for safety, code violations, and things of that nature. This has been going on for 37 years through the Code Congresses, so we welcome the opportunity to bring it to Huntsville, and hopefully it will help a lot of folks. I'm gonna turn this over to David. David's gonna introduce some of our partners. And I'll let you have one.
Thank you. I want to introduce, first of all, Mr. Will Kaufman. He's a Council for International Code Council, which is an office in Birmingham. Also, I've got Julie Hay and Allison Corey, who are architects. They're officers for the Architects Institute of America, the North Alabama Chapter. And I've got Mr. Wade Thompson, who is a membership director for the Association of Builders and Contractors of North Alabama. Also, I've got, of course, Fire Marshal Dan Wilkerson and Chief McFaulen, the Fire Department of Huntsville. And I've got Byrne Turner, who's the president of the Huntsville Madison County Builders Association, and also John Roberts, who's the government liaison for the Huntsville Madison County Builders Association. These folks represent all different organizations, different venues. But the key that works for us is that we're all part of a team. We have differences of opinion occasionally, but we're all, all our efforts and all of our work goes into making sure that buildings are built safely and code compliant for the people of Huntsville. And that's our main focus. And that's really, our whole goal in life is to make sure that people are protected in their homes and businesses.
And David, we have this proclamation. And as you can see, really, building safety or safety in our community is a team effort. And it's a team effort that goes all the way down from the Builders Association to the people who designed the buildings, to our inspectors, all the way across. And everybody has a part to play in this. And the end result is that when you're in the city of Huntsville and in a building, you know that it's a safe place to be. So thank you to all of you for all that you do. I have a proclamation naming this Building Safety Month May and for the 2017 Building Safety Month proclamation, I will spare all of you the seven "whereas"s and just say, therefore, we do hereby proclaim the month of May 2017 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join with the members of the Huntsville City Council in participating in Building Safety Month activities. Thank y'all so much. Here's your proclamation there.
That concludes our recognitions. We have wonderful people working in the city, and it's great to be able to show them off, as well as to show off the youth and the great youth in our community. We have no items from the council for presentation or recognition. We have no business with outside legal representation. This may be a short meeting. Item six is public hearings, 6A1. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 17-164, amending the zoning ordinance of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Huntsville, Alabama by amending Article 24, Highway Business C4 District, Section 24.2, Density Controls, by amending subsection 24.2.4.1 and subsection 24.2.4.2, amending Section 24.3, Density Controls, by amending subsection 24.3.1 and amending Section 24.5, Off-Street Parking and Loading Requirements, to update density controls and required yards language and add shared parking requirements. This was set at the March 9th, 2017, regular council meeting. Ms. Ashley.
Ashley Nichols, Planning Division. This proposed zoning ordinance amendment is to amend our existing Article 24, which pertains to our Highway Business C4 District. C4 is primarily found along University, as well as there are other pockets within the city along North and South Parkway, as well as in the Sparkman Drive area. This proposed ordinance amendment will relax our existing front yard and rear yard setbacks. As you can see on the screen, currently, our front yard setbacks are a minimum of 50 feet from all street right-ofaways. This proposed zoning ordinance amendment will amend the existing front yard minimum to 50 for arterial rights-ofaways only. So this would include Sparkman Drive and Highway 72 West, and also University, and no less than five feet from all collectors and local street right-ofaways. So this would include your other roads, such as Old Monrovia and Carl T. Jones, which also have pockets of C4. Also, for the rear yard, the current minimum is 20 feet, unless the rear line abuts a residential district. This would also amend this particular setback to none, unless that residential district clause still applies, and then you would have the 20-foot minimum. Also, we have adjusted the, some of the parking driveway and vehicular access language. It's currently 20 feet from all street right-ofaways. We would also like to adjust this to be 20 feet only for arterial rights-ofway and not collectors and local streets. As well as, planning staff would like to propose a change to the existing parking requirements. Currently, all of the parking, regardless of the use type, is based on our current existing Article 70, which is primarily use-based. The new proposed parking amendments would separate those. For your single-tenant developments, they would fall under the existing Article 70. For any mixed-use, multi-tenant, and multifamily developments, or any other residential developments, they would need to apply with our shared parking matrix, which is within our Article 27, and that refers to our Village Business C6 District. The bicycle parking will still remain the same and will remain unchanged.
Very much, Ms. Nichols. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this ordinance? Ms. Reed.
Jackie Reed, I just want to ask one question. Are you, in this right here, are you changing the setback on residential areas at all?
No, ma'am.
Side yard, front yard, and backyard?
No, ma'am. This is only applicable to our C4 district. This doesn't apply to any residential district within the city or any other commercial districts.
And C4 is?
C4, you will find mostly along University Drive. So most of the area near the former Madison Square Mall, West Side Center, the Walmart Supercenter on Sparkman and North Parkway, that is zone C4, as well as we have some other smaller pockets throughout the city.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council regarding this matter? Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed.
Move for approval?
Motion from Mr. Kling, second by the Chair. There are discussion, Mr. Russell, and then Mr. Culver.
Madam President, thank you. Ms. Nichols, why are we doing this? Who asked for it?
This is primarily to give developers an option if they want to place their structures closer to the street, if they're not on a major arterial. Currently, all street types have that 50-foot minimum. This would give an option for those who are not on major arterials, such as 72 and University. It would give them a little bit lesser setback that they could use. Or if they still wanted to use the existing 50, they could. It just relaxes that minimum for other street types.
And why does the city want to relax that minimum?
We have many developers that are interested in having new product types. Not everyone is interested in having the abundance of parking in the front of the building. More people want to create a more walkable environment, so we're hoping that this change will help encourage that.
And so you think it's a good thing?
I do.
Okay. I'm a little hesitant. Tell me how it affects Carl T. Jones.
Currently, Carl T. Jones, there is a pocket on the north side of Carl T. across from the existing Jones Valley Shopping Center. That property was rezoned, I think, in 2013. That property can change at any time to another zoning designation. We don't have any plans for that particular project, but that is one additional pocket of C4 that we have outside of University and North and South Parkway.
Okay, so the purpose is just to give more flexibility for new-type products from the developer?
Yes, as well as to encourage shared parking, to alleviate our current sea of parking, which has been a problem for most developments that seem to be multi-tenant. They tend to have an abundance of parking versus meeting our parking regulations.
Okay. And so there have been issues where the city butts up against another city or another part of the county? And would that affect that anymore? Not that I don't really have all that much compassion for the other people, but I'm just wondering.
It would not. It would only apply to our residential districts if this particular, for the rear yard, if this property was to abut some type of residential. It would only apply to, within the city of Huntsville, city limits. It wouldn't apply to Madison.
So I guess my question is, I want to, I actually really want it to stay the same, because I don't want them to build a Walmart five feet from some guy's house in Madison? Are we changing that where that's gonna happen?
I'm not certain that there's room for any more Walmarts in Madison, but we will gladly, we would gladly take them if they would like to locate here. We don't think that there should be any impact on that, and Shane can give you a little bit more detail.
Mr. Davis, would you like to add to that?
Yes, Councilmember, very good questions being asked, Mark. This is really a process of the next phase of the big picture process. You know, we've spent a couple of years relaying out a master plan for the city. We've heard from citizens in some of the mixed-use developments and really some nodes trying to create some pockets of energy in neighborhoods. C4 is usually at very major intersections where you'd want to try to create that, where you'd have buildings closer to the street and parking kind of hidden by the buildings. So I've asked the planning department to start coming to council and the planning commission to update some of our outdated zoning to allow that type of construction to occur. And this is one example of that.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Culver.
Actually, she has, Ms. Nichols, has answered all of my questions. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who has questions, or is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Councilmembers.
Now is the time and place for a public hearing, 6A2, on ordinance number 17166, rezoning 3.98 acres on the west side of Seminole Drive and on the south side of 8th Avenue from Residence 1C District and Residential Office 2 District to Village Business C6 District. This was set at the March 9th, 2017, regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols.
This property is adjacent to the Low Mill development. This property is currently zoned Residential Office 2, as well as it's zoned Residence 1C District. The 1C, one, excuse me, the Residence 1C District has been existing since 2002. That property was previously one of our multifamily districts prior to that time. The Residential Office 2 District has been existing since 1998, and it was previously split between one of our multifamily districts, as well as it was C1. Planning staff would like to propose that we rezone this property, which is approximately 3.98 acres, to Village Business C6. As you all remember, the Village Business C6 District is one of our newest districts within the city, and this will be our first use of this particular district, and we hope to see more of this. There's a proposed mixed-use development that would like to locate on this property, and they cannot do so under the existing zoning designation.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address this matter? Ms. Reed.
My only question is, is a developer on this property, or does the city?
The city currently owns it. We actually have a purchase and sale agreement that council has previously approved. The property is not yet closed, and the rezoning is just part of that process. So there is a future owner already identified, and we've already agreed to the sale, but the closing's not occurred. So as of today, the city is still the owner of this property.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Any other questions, Ms. Reed? Is there anyone else who wishes to address the city on this matter? Yes, sir. Please identify yourself.
Kevin Weil, I live at 113 Fourth Street in the 4th District, between Governors and Clinton. My question here would be, you know, we're talking about C6. We're talking about residence, right? Mixed use?
Within the C6 district, you can have multifamily. Within this particular district, it does not accommodate single-family detached or attached dwellings.
Okay. And who is the, who's the proposed buyer? And what is their proposed development?
So the buyer is an LLC called Invent Huntsville. That is the Huntsville component of a larger company called Invent Communities. Where they have done most of their work, where they're most prominent is in East Nashville. So if you're familiar with the redevelopment revitalization going on throughout East Nashville, they're one of the developers that have done that. They've done both a significant amount of single-family, as well as some other projects similar to what's proposed on this particular parcel. What they have proposed on this parcel is a mixed-use development that fits within C6. So part of the restriction in our sale agreement is they cannot do anything that would require variance, so they must comply fully with C6, as well as the city has design approval for their development. So the development would fit completely within the restrictions of C6. What they have proposed would have a mixture of office or storefront retail, restaurant-type uses on the ground floor, and would be residential above. And so it, C6 is a district that was created by the council, what, about a year or so ago, specifically for this type of purpose. We think there's a number of our urban neighborhoods where this would be a great use. And this particular site is one of those that, quite frankly, as we developed and were drafting the language of this district to bring to council, this site was one of those that was contemplated as an example. And so much of the restrictions and the design of C6 contemplates this particular parcel, as well as others throughout the city. So there's a lot of different places where it could potentially be used. This is the first one that's been brought to council to rezone to C6. But the development is mixed-use. It is fully within the restrictions of C6 and would have some residential on the upper floors above the ground floor retail.
Is Publix in what used to be Council Court? Is that C6?
It is not, and it would not fit in C6. C6 does not allow such large footprint stores. It is specifically designed for neighborhood-scale components of buildings.
Shop, business owner, live in your shop, dual residence.
Absolutely. In fact, you know, I spent a lot of time talking with the developers and just talking through their business model. Examples they gave are places where artists who are maybe kind of graduating out of Low Mill could potentially have, you know, studio on the ground floor, apartment above, that sort of thing, are examples of the kind of market they think they might lease into.
Okay. My other question would be, what do we do with the current residents? You know, the neighborhood is improving.
Madam President, I'd ask the questions to be directed to you, and one person speak at a time. and one person speak at a time.
Thank you. Mr. Wiley, and it would be very helpful also if you could ask all your questions at one time and we'll get them answered. So your last question is, what happens to the current residents?
Well, what do we do with the current residents? And, you know, are they included in the plan for the neighborhood? Because a lot of people have a lot of time invested there. And, you know, we look at why those houses are there and why the projects are there. They were shanties originally. I mean, it is Booger Town, that's what they called it, right? So when we change, we need to consider the history of the neighborhood because it was labor that lived there because everybody used to work at the mill. So what happens to the people that are there? And I guess that would be my question.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Madam President, could I respond to that?
Certainly, Mr. Kling, that is your district. If you have information to share.
I think I do because there's been a long history in that neighborhood. Well, basically, this property, actually, correct me if I'm wrong, this is basically unoccupied vacant fields that we're dealing with.
That's correct.
And this is a major investment. In fact, I commend Mayor Battle and his team for putting this whole project together because this is a major investment into Low Mill. Low Mill's had history with crime, issues with rescue mission that was located there. But the feedback I've received from residents in that neighborhood's been overwhelmingly positive because all of a sudden, the eyes of the city are on Low Mill. And instead of it being the dumping ground, and yes, I know it was referred to as Booger Town, it still has that history, it is turning around, and this is a place in the inner area of the city that's getting reinvested. And the company that's coming in, they have a wonderful reputation for what they've done up in East Nashville. And I think if you talk to residents in that area, you'll find they're very positive about this investment, and it's going to be a great thing.
Mr. Hamilton, did you have anything?
Well, I think it's important to point out the actions for the council. This is vacant land, so there are no residences that are in any way displaced by this development. These are vacant lots.
But there are a number of residences that will be benefited by it.
We believe so. I mean, that's certainly why we pursue getting post-to-come investment parts in the city is so that hopefully it is a catalyst for people to invest in their homes. There are a lot of great homes in that neighborhood and a lot of great homeowners, and you would certainly hope that this kind of investment would be a catalyst for them to continue to invest in their homes and their homes would appreciate in value.
Thank you very much for your questions.
Yeah, I thank you for clarifying. I just, I wanted to clarify, and I'd like to thank you guys because it is improving over there. And, you know, everything I've asked for, Mr. Kling, has been helpful with. And 805 is a huge success, but I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you for coming tonight. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Ms. McMullin?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Michelle McMullin, 2808 7th Avenue. We've been at this now for almost two decades. The West Huntsville Civic Association, when it was first formed, set a goal, and it was simple: to take back our neighborhood and to work to achieve its highest potential. The phrase "live, work, play" wasn't really in use then, but the concept of having a pedestrian-friendly residential neighborhood with smaller-scale mom-and-pop shops and places to work has been around a long time, and it works. It is what our village lost and hopes to reclaim. Urban sprawl has contributed to the demise of smaller-scale communities with character and a sense of place. Our goal was to preserve, protect, promote, and position the village to attract like-minded individuals and developers who saw the enormous potential of the area. When TV news anchor Don Phelps asked me what we really wanted to achieve back in 1997, my response was that what we want isn't rocket science, and has been done in other cities, and should be done in the case of Low Mill Village, and that the ultimate goal was to create a historic tourist destination site with a possible artist venue, a mixed-use draw similar to the Jack's Brewery in New Orleans, only located within a historic Mill Village, and by doing so, preserve an integral part of our heritage, one of the few remaining former textile mill villages in the state of Alabama. And y'all bear with me, it's long, I've got a lot of folks to thank. Plan A for us was to locate a developer who realized the advantages of investing in an existing neighborhood that had unbeatable location at the heart of our city and who also appreciated the historic, excuse me, character of an area that had potential to be one of the most unique areas in town. A developer who had enough vision to see past the condition the neighborhood was in and who had the capacity and willingness to help transform the area to its highest potential. The effort to locate a developer has been like searching for the proverbial needle in a haystack. And it isn't like we didn't have some pretty heavy hitters in our corner encouraging us and trying to help us locate such a developer. We had the help of two former sitting governors, a couple of state senators, a state representative, and former Congressman Bud Kramer and his entire staff trying to find the right developer. There was no lack of support or effort, but every developer we found was only interested in building all-new subdivisions, or they could not see the potential and gravitated toward larger profit margins. When I say that what Justin Hicks and Jamie Pfeffer and the team at Invent Communities specialize in is a rare thing, it is an understatement. Some would say that we were just ahead of the curve, but the truth is that the curve had to be created first, and that has not been easy. I won't go into the Neighborhood's Plan B and C or other than to say that we've been actively protecting the area in the hope that location and time would see the area evolve into one of Huntsville's most unique neighborhoods, while encouraging people not to acquire, tear down, and build nondescript McMansions that resemble anywhere USA, but consider building homes with a retro vibe that fit the area. Thank goodness for Jamie and Justin and the fact that they found the village, and now we're back to Plan A. You just cannot begin to imagine how very relieved and grateful we are that they discovered Low Mill Village, saw the potential, and chose to invest in and become such a huge part of the fabric of our community. Residential office zoning was initially created specifically for the length of Seminole Drive that is in question tonight, plus 9th and 10th Avenues. The coordination and collaboration of multiple city departments in conjunction with the neighborhood was undertaken in order to eliminate and prevent pay-per-night flop houses taking advantage of the boarding house allowance in the old zoning. If we had not successfully created, implemented, and immediately rezoned Seminole Drive, Low Mill Village would have been irretrievably lost. RO2 zoning has protected us as well and served as a temporary placeholder, which was our intent. Zoning is what allowed several entities to utterly devastate and almost destroy our neighborhood. Residential Office 2 and Residence 1C has protected us well, and we do not take any changes to that zoning lightly. Speaking on behalf of the West Huntsville Civic Association, historic Low Mill Village, I want to thank the planning department once again for working with the neighborhood to create Village Business C6 District Regulations. Specifically, I personally would like to thank John Hamilton and from planning, Ashley Nichols, and Jim McGuffey for carrying the water on this and for allowing us input into C6. We really appreciate that. This is the second time zoning regs have been created for our village, and we hope to see Village C6 utilized in other areas of town, which leads us to why we are here. The parcel up for rezoning tonight is special, not just because it is the focal point of the neighborhood, but because it is the location of the former Mill Superintendent's house. Two and a half years ago, we were in the process of designing a neighborhood park and memorial on the former Mill Boss site when I met the developers from Invent Communities. The neighborhood had intended to create our own little town square across from the Mill with the hope of one day triggering controlled redevelopment along the eastern side of Seminole Drive, a small main street with shops that would look like a natural extension of the Mill and the Village, which we dubbed Boss Row. That has always been one of our goals. After talking with the developers and hearing their interest in the neighborhood, I visited Nashville to look at some of the communities they have worked within. The quality of construction and the historically appropriate designs of their infill housing is impressive and exactly what we have worked to attract. Three months later, I received a call from Michelle Jordan. And Michelle, thank you so much for calling me. That was one of the best calls of my life. And she told me that the city had just been approached by developers, and could I meet with her and John Hamilton? They told me that the developers were interested in our parkland, and since it's the most prime, already-assembled vacant property in the village, we were not surprised. They told me it was entirely the neighborhood's call as to what happened with the property, that we could move forward with the park or see what the developer proposed and go that route. On behalf of the neighborhood, I would like to thank the city for letting it be our call. We chose to immediately put the park on hold and wait to see what was being proposed. I also need to say, it took almost 16 years to locate property that could be comped at market value or below in order to utilize community development funding to purchase property for our park. I need to thank Ken Binion and Scott Irwin from Community Development for their support and the work that went into comping the parkland. Scott, you really went the extra mile, and we truly appreciate you both. It was hard to give up a four-acre park, but we felt the neighborhood's sacrifice of that much space was well worth it and that the proposed mixed-use development, plus the single-family homes that will go along with it, will help revitalize and ultimately achieve the neighborhood's original goals. Based upon the quality of construction and historically sensitive design and overall vision of their work and the role that they played in the transformation of multiple neighborhoods in Nashville, we are confident that Justin Hicks and Jamie Pfeffer and the entire Invent Huntsville team will also play a major part in the transformation of Low Mill Village. Due to the unique location, this mixed-use development does not negatively encroach into our core residential area, and we believe that it will be extremely successful due to the convenience and the need for higher-quality retail shops and eateries in proximity to Low Mill Arts and Entertainment and the neighborhood. We truly believe that it will become a gathering spot with ambiance and a historic character that cannot be duplicated anywhere else in this city. We ask that you vote favorably to rezone this parcel to Village C6, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McMullin. The Mill Villages are fortunate to have you as such a powerful advocate. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council on this matter? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Culver. Is there a discussion, questions? I think Ms. McMullin said it very eloquently. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We will look forward to that project. We have one public hearing to be set. 6B1 is a resolution to set a hearing for suspension of licensure for certain taxpayers. This is set for the May 11th, 2017, regular council meeting. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The hearing is set. It's now time for communications from the public, 7A, communications from the public. We have two individuals who have signed up. You will have three minutes. Please come to the microphone and introduce yourself with your name and address. The first person to sign up is Tom Devonish. Subject is Hampton Cove Way. Mr. Devonish, welcome.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak. As you know, I've been here several times to talk about the speeders on Hampton Cove Way. Of course, I was here in January and February of this year, and in the end of February, I attended the Hampton Cove Homeowners Association meeting. I addressed the board. And at that point in time, they told, they had voted in October and confirmed it in November to allow the section of Hampton Cove Way between DeFord Mill and Honors Row to vote. There are 31 homes on that section on whether they wanted speed cushions installed. And so when I attended the February board meeting, they told me that they had had a special last-minute board meeting with, they won't tell me how many people were in the meeting, but Mark Russell and Dan Sanders attended the meeting, and that's when they decided to negate putting the, allowing those 31 homeowners the opportunity to vote on whether they wanted speed cushions on that section of Hampton Cove Way. And so as a result, they were proposing to put in radar speed indicators. And at this point, here we are, seven months later, after the speed study that was done in September of 2016, and not a thing is done, not a thing has happened. They are still going down Hampton Cove Way at 50 miles an hour. A guy yesterday threw on the brakes on his fancy BMW and rolled down the window and yelled at me because I was telling him to 25 miles an hour. And then, of course, he had to show me how powerful his Beamer was and tear off into the sunset. So, you know, there's still, there's a little girl, she comes in every day, 7:15 in the morning in the neighborhood, 50 miles an hour coming into the neighborhood and going out of the neighborhood at 50 miles an hour. There's nothing being done to stop this situation. And I just want to know how much longer we have to put up with it.
Mr. Devonish, thank you for being here tonight. I believe, is Mr. Sanders here out in the audience? And Mr. Sanders is here. If you'd like to step out into the lobby, I think he could discuss this with you.
Okay.
Thank you. The next person to sign up is Jackie Reed. Subject is government.
Y'all are lucky I didn't wear my rattlesnake clothes today. I want to thank the city employees and Joy McKee for the green team today that put on, out here in front of City Hall, they gave away plants, bags, hot dogs. It was just a great day for the people that come down here. Joy does a great job with all that, and the employees did a great job. I want to thank them. But I did wear my rattlesnake clothes, and I was supposed to wear them tonight, but I'm saving them because I'm, y'all are going to hear about it sooner or later again because I think there's a whole lot of sneaking going on downtown. Remember the time I wore my coat and I said, "The rattlesnakes between you and the school board"? It proved out right. It turned out right. What I said was sneaking around and making you deals. And look at the school system. It's a mess, a mess. I don't want the city to turn out like this. Mayor Battle, when you run for governor, you walk out like Ward Iskey did and leave us in the same mess. Please, let us help you with the city. Anyway, I want to start out right. Thanks for allowing the public input. And Joy McKee and the police officers, they do a great, great job. But this gentleman here that's begging for help, we do not have enough police officers in this city. We're about 200 understaffed. And I know it's hard to get them to take the training and everything today with all that's going on in the police department, but we need to get some police officers. We have the same problem, I was going to bring it up tonight, traffic. Nobody respects anybody on the roads anymore. They'll run over you. It's terrible in this city. We don't seem to be doing our part with the state to solve any of this. I come to their meetings and y'all have done, laid the plans in their hands. Somebody, somewhere's got to be smart enough to help with this traffic. I don't know who you're going to call on. Call a contractor in or a consultant like you did to the city of Huntsville. You've got a consultant in, you're telling us what we need in the city and going to pay him a lot of money when the people could have done that. Call in a consultant to help us with this traffic problem. Maybe that's where our money's been spent. Anyway, I was going to talk about the master plan. The next meeting, and maybe the next one with your consultant, I'd like for you to have it in a good location and allow public to get up and tell us what you think, where you think the City Hall needs to be removed or placed or whatever. Let's hear from the public. Bringing a consultant in, and y'all already got it laid out and planned, and what you're going to do and tell us to walk around and look at it? That's not public input, and that's not talking to the public. Maybe I'm wrong or crazy. I think I'm a little of both, but y'all helped make me that way. I'm blaming on you. The doctors tried to help, but it's up here. This is what's causing all my problems. Anyway, I went to, I have to tell you this quick. I went to Huntsville High the other day to my grandson's awards ceremony. Devastated. I could not believe the parking.
Ms. Reed, your time is up. If it's all right with the council, could we give one more minute? We'd love to hear your story.
Just a second, I'll hurry. It is terrible, terrible, that we plan, the school board plan, on connecting schools, building monsters for schools, 176 buses twice a day. I don't know who come up with all this, but it was wrong. It's a mess. 30 years we've got to put up with this? This is wrong, that we allow this to go on. There was no parking over there. Anywhere, as y'all know, how did we get in such a predicament with the leaders of this city and the school board to allow? city and the school board to allow some of this mess to go on in this city? It is terrible over there, terrible that we have put up with this. I don't know the answer to it, but, and Huntsville matters, Mayor Battle, all over this city, not just one area and one neighborhood, but Huntsville, the whole city of Huntsville matters, not just one area. Remember that and thank you all. I'll be back. I love you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. We have no Huntsville Utilities items. We will proceed on to item number nine, board appointments. Nine A one is a resolution reappointing Todd Howard to the Madison County Three Ten Board for a term to expire April one, twenty twenty-three. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Nine A two is a resolution appointing Marlena Primo to the Madison County Three Ten Board for a term to expire April one, twenty twenty-three. Chair moves for approval. Second by Mr. Culver. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item nine A three is a resolution appointing Robert L. Stagg to the Huntsville Madison County Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors for a term to expire April eleven, twenty twenty-one. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate. Any opposed, motion carries. Nine A four is a resolution reappointing Dick Reeves to the Industrial Development Board of the City of Huntsville for a term to expire May twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three. Motion by Mr. Culver, second by Mr. Kling. Is there any discussion? Motion, all in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. We'll now move on to board appointment nominations. Nine B five is the nomination of Avani Kakani for reappointment to the Healthcare Authority of the City of Huntsville for a term to expire April fifteen, twenty twenty-three, made by the chair. Nine B six, nine B six is the nomination of David Smith for reappointment to the Healthcare Authority of the City of Huntsville for a term to expire April fifteen, twenty twenty-three, made by the chair. Are there any other nominations to come to the council? Hearing none, we will go on to item number, item number ten, approval of expenditures. Ten A is a resolution authorizing expenditures for payment. Mr. Kling, you have the report of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for payment of vouchers in the amount of seven million, eight hundred nineteen thousand, forty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. There are any questions regarding that report? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The report is accepted. Ten B is a resolution authorizing travel for Will Culver to attend the Alabama League of Municipalities Annual Convention in Birmingham, Alabama, May twenty twenty-three, twenty seventeen. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Is there any discussion? All in favor by indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item number eleven, communications from the mayor. Mayor Battle, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. This, we're getting into a very busy time in the city of Huntsville this next, next week, we'll, or this weekend, we'll be having Panoply in the downtown area. Next weekend will be the barbecue contest along with the mayor's bike ride, along with Healthy Huntsville. I guess we'll eat barbecue and then we'll get healthy and kind of bits together, I guess. And, and we're gonna be doing a lot of different things with Healthy Huntsville, so please look at your calendars. You can check, check out the calendar. I think you'll find a lot of, a lot of this that's going on. We have live music happening now on the Huntsville Times building on the square and we will also be doing the This Place Matters campaign for the whole week. And this is where we've taken buildings that are older buildings and we've repurposed them and used them for something else. It's really kind of a neat thing. It's almost like recycling buildings and taking a building and use it for another purpose and, and some very special things. The council members will be going out this next month and I will be going out and we will be marking buildings that have been repurposed and have been an asset for this community. And so that, that campaign is just done in conjunction with Historic Preservation Month. Healthy Huntsville Event, Thursday, May fourth. We will be walking at lunch. You can walk as long as you want to or as short as you want to, but we'll get out and walk some, meet us down in Big Spring Park and we'll go from there. And then on Saturday, May, May sixth, we will have, we'll be at Big Spring Park at ten o'clock and that will be the mayor's bike ride. So the rules of mayor's bike ride are no heels, mayor wins and, and I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. We will move on to communicate, twelve communications from council. We will begin with Councilman Keith.
Thank you, Madam President. Excuse me for the length of this, I had an event last and council meetings, so I didn't get a chance to talk about these things, but about three months ago, a friend of mine contacted me, he has, she has a small nonprofit up in Chicago and she said, I really want to show the world to these young kids. And I went straight into Huntsville, Alabama mode and pitched the idea of them coming to the greatest city in America. So she brought thirteen young men from Inglewood. If you're not familiar with South Side of Chicago, it's a very interesting place to say the least. Amid that, I'm sort of going somewhere with it. I had a number of those individuals staying with me. Now, at my young age have now solidified that I just want to have a kid between the age of zero and ten and then skip the teenage years. But these teenagers stayed with me and we had great conversation, but I'm saying that to say this. After convincing them to come down here, saving up their money, the city of Huntsville is an amazing place on their involvement. I only made a couple of calls and they got a chance to see the Space and Rocket Center. They got a chance to join the Boys and Girls Club and got a chance to go to certain churches and churches picked up the tab on some of their food. But one of the things that they wrote back about and called back about was very interesting and I'm sorry that I didn't send the email to talk about this, but I had a chance to take them to my neighborhood where I grew up, Northwoods, and I had a chance to let them go and have fun with kids their age at Calvary Hills. Now, this was specifically a very, very packed day over at Calvary Hills. And I just sat back and I watched the individuals who work at Park and Recs converse with these young men amid backgrounds that you just couldn't imagine. And the connectability that we had at Park and Recs with those individuals was astonishing. And the one thing that they said, now they went to the Space and Rocket Center, they saw the Bird Mound, they saw it all, they said, y'all's community center is so cool. That was one of the funny things that they said. So my hat goes off to Steve and I don't think we said enough of the job that those individuals do and people from outside of our state recognize the beauty of the professionalism as well as the access that we, we give a chance to give to those individuals. Secondly, I also took my third ride along and with the police department in South Huntsville and it was a great experience. The hat goes off to the captain down there, Captain Malone, the professionalism as well as the police officer I rode with. The whole police department continues, continues to impress me over and over and I'm very thankful for that. But more to the more pressing news is that we are having a D-one cleanup and I'm extremely excited for what we have next Saturday. We have so many nonprofits as well as social organizations who are getting involved. As you guys know, Chris and Joy have made this thing go and Doc as well. And I am very thankful for the city of Huntsville as well as the volunteers who will be involved. So that is next Saturday from eight to twelve. And also wanted to thank, and I'm glad he was reminded earlier on, again, another thank you to Mr. Cunningham and Shane. They handled an issue that happened on the North Parkway with a business opening in a way that I just had never imagined city government to work. And I just don't think we say thank you enough. Not many people know, I had even had to tap Councilman Russell to get the name, but not many people know who the director of inspections is, but that's an important role. And just seeing how they handled a situation that allowed a small business to open for the first time was just astonishing, amazing and wonderful. So really, I just want to say thank you to the city of Huntsville for not only making me look good, but just being what we are and that is just a welcoming, inviting, successful city. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Keith. Councilman Russell.
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to mention the Panoply this weekend. Looking forward to good weather and a good time and we'll certainly spend as much time as I can down there this weekend. Downtown Huntsville is alive. Last weekend, the paddle the canal race was really interesting and if those of y'all that saw it, you know what I was talking about. Those that don't, you need, you need to go next year. It was really exciting and everybody beat the mayor's time. Everybody? And he has made fun of me about this bike race for six years now, so I will win this thing.
Attaboy, Toby.
Yeah, right now, I'm gonna beat him. It is Historic Preservation Month coming up and This Place Matters campaign is very important to the city. We were able to go to Mr. Kling's district and visit West Huntsville School, a great reuse of that building. And we've got four or five other visits we're gonna do in the month of May. It's just historic preservation is so important to the area and it's certainly important to the area that I represent and I'm looking forward to visiting everyone else's district and seeing the great things that are going on in your areas. In addition to all the great things Mayor Battle said, on May eleventh through thirteenth, the Sports Commission will host the Alabama High School Athletic Association Soccer Tournament. We will have the best teams from all over the state playing. And also at that same time, the Sports Commission will be hosting the North Regional Softball Tournament. And so we'll have a lot of activity that weekend, a lot of visitors to our city and you'll be noticing the athletes in our restaurants and hotels. So it's gonna be a great weekend for tourism and we hope we have good weather as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Councilman Kling.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, piggyback off of what Councilman Russell said, this is kind of a great time to recognize the positives that are taking place in the Low Mill neighborhood because there certainly had been challenges in the past. As Mark had mentioned, we did recognize the former West Huntsville Elementary School was designated for this, This Place Matters recognition. Mayor Battle, Council President Robinson and Councilman Russell and I were there. And it was a chance to recognize the great work that's been done by Brendan Cruz. He took that old school building, turned it into a beautiful showpiece. And one positive that came out of that is the fact that we're all looking forward to the future because when West Lawn School relocates over to the new location, Brendan Cruz is also gonna be the person taking that property. And if he's able to do anything near what he did with it, it's gonna be just a great positive for, for that area to have. And in a, piggybacking off of that, the West Lawn School is gonna be consolidated into a new K through eight, twenty-five million dollar plus Morris School that's gonna be opening up very soon. And in conjunction with that, Walker McGinnis from the school board and I are gonna be having a joint meeting on Tuesday, May the ninth, five thirty PM. And at that time, there's gonna be discussion of municipal issues and school system issues. And I understand Mayor Battle's going to be there, Dr. Aiken, School Superintendent, is gonna be there. And at the conclusion, there's gonna be a tour of the new school building. So this is a chance for folks to see it. It is great and it's gonna be a great shot in the arm for that section of the western part of Bob Wallace. And again, the West Lawn School Building is not gonna sit idle. Brendan Cruz is going to take it and I think that's certainly gonna be a great project that's gonna come. And I think it's a great thing, the working relationship that we have between the school board and the city council and of course, we have two former board members sitting up here. But the fact that when the school system quits using a school building, it doesn't just sit idle, it doesn't become a magnet for vandals, it's not becoming something that's incompatible with the neighborhood. We've had great things have happened over there. The former Stone Middle School is going great guns with being a major tourist destination here in the city of Huntsville with the brew pubs that it has. West Huntsville Elementary and certainly the West Lawn, these are gonna be great things to happen. West Lawn, I believe, is also gonna become a business incubator with perhaps some retail and some shopping taking place. So these are things that are great and I'm just proud to be part of a city government where a mayor, council, the administrative staff are all looking inward and it's not all about moving outward to the suburbs, but looking at the inward areas and doing what we can. And I do think that the rezoning that we did earlier this evening, Madam President, is probably gonna lead to some good things taking place in other central areas of the city, in the north and other parts in other council districts. And again, I think that's gonna be a great thing. So thanks to everybody for the great job that they've done and everyone drive carefully with Panoply. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kling. Councilman Culver.
Thank you, Madam President. I too am looking forward to the Panoply. I will be emceeing an act there, so you all come out and see me in a different light if you choose. I'm always excited to attend Panoply and to participate in those activities. And speaking of participation, Mayor, I certainly want to thank you again publicly, Mayor, for not only attending our last town hall meeting in Sherwood Park, but allowing your department heads and representatives to attend as well. We were able to address a lot of issues. We promised them that we would start on time and finish on time and we did, so we were through by seven thirty. Sherwood Park residents have a lot of inquiries. There's a lot of activity going on, there are a lot of things that we're looking at doing. And with that being said, one of the things that I always do as council representative in District Five is to make sure that our community is informed of things that we are about to do so that we can get input from them. So I'm sure we'll be going back to Sherwood Park again. As I prepare to close, I would be remiss if I didn't share with you all that I offered to Councilman Kling since he brought up the rescue mission, the opportunity to take it back if he so chooses in that district. But I know that's not gonna happen and we'll just move forward with what's going on currently. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Culver. I had the opportunity last week to attend the Future and Beyond Symposium. This was an exploration of diversity and inclusion in our community that has been in the planning stages for a couple of years. It was a partnership between NASA and Team Redstone, the Chamber Leadership Huntsville, Madison County, our universities and the city. Kenny Anderson was our liaison for the symposium and also served as the emcee and did an excellent job. It was a great presentation and we look forward to continuing to have conversations around the topics of diversity, inclusion in the future. I also want to thank Craig Shaw of Operation Green Team and his volunteers. I received an email a few weeks ago from an elderly lady who just was unable to keep her yard, the leaves in her yard picked up and she, she asked me for some help and I sent it to, to Joy McKee. And the next thing I know, Craig Shaw is sending me an email telling me that the work had been done. He was, he was joined by volunteers from TNF Lawn Care, specifically Dale Thompson, Ricky Flippo and Christie Beck. In a matter of hours, they were able to gather up all the leaves. Today, I received an email from Mrs. Zalinski who said that they had been able to accomplish what would have taken her all summer to do. We have wonderful people working in this city as volunteers and we are so grateful to have their assistance. Speaking of Operation Green Team, the South Huntsville Cleanup will take place in partnership with Operation Green Team on May twentieth. We will meet at eight AM in the parking lot of Grissom High School where we will distribute supplies. I have asked that neighborhood associations work on their entrances and that individual residents work on curbs and gutters. For those neighborhoods that have, that hold, have already held their cleanup days during the month of May, we will also have opportunities at Ditto Landing. There are always opportunities at Ditto Landing to do some cleanup down there. So that will be part of the cleanup effort as well. The South Huntsville Business Association, that same day, so after you spend the morning cleaning up your neighborhood on May twentieth, you can join the South Huntsville Business Association for Spring Fest. This is the second time it's going to be held in Rosie's Plaza on May twentieth, starting at three o'clock. Merchants in the plaza as well as vendors from throughout South Huntsville will be gathering. There will be sample, free samples, there will be door prizes, there will be giveaways and Cosmic Mama will be playing. So it, last year's event was truly terrific. We want to support our businesses particularly during the construction and this is one opportunity to do that, so please join us. And the construction is about to get interesting. We want everyone to be aware that a significant traffic shift will take place on the South Parkway tomorrow morning, April twenty-eighth at ten AM. Traffic is going to be diverted from the main line to the signalized intersection on top of the Martin Road Bridge. So wrap your head around that for a minute and you can think about what the consequences are gonna be. It will take about eight weeks to build the new main line under the bridge. A lot of that work is gonna be done at night. We ask everyone to be patient because we anticipate there will be long lines as all that traffic comes to a halt right there at the top of Martin Road at the signal. We ask everyone to take alternate routes, to stagger their drive times and to pray for dry weather. We, the project continues to be way ahead of schedule. In fact, this eight-week diversion could have taken a year, but because of the way it's being structured and the work that Mr. Davis has done and Ms. Martin to coordinate with Aldot, it's, it's going to be an eight-week inconvenience. And a good portion of that eight-week is gonna take place when school is not in session, which should lighten the challenges as well.
Madam President, has that information been widely distributed?
It has been very wisely, widely disseminated. It has been very wisely, widely disseminated. All major news outlets have picked it up, it's been on Facebook, it's on the city's page, and it's going out in my electronic newsletter tomorrow as well.
Thank you.
But you know what? There are still going to be people who don't hear about it, so please help share that. Any other comments from Council? We'll proceed on then to item number 13, unfinished business items for action. Item number 13A, ordinance number 17-249, declaring property surplus and authorizing donation of said property to Kent and Diana Golden, introduced April 13th, 2017 at the regular council meeting. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 13B, ordinance number 17-250, annexing 79.86 acres of land lying on the north side of Indian Ridge Drive and east of Ditto Landing Parkway. This was introduced April 13th, 2017, regular council meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Mr. Culver, second by the Chair. Ms. Nichols.
This annexation petition is approximately 79.86 acres. It's located on the north side of Indian Ridge Drive and east of Ditto Landing Parkway. This property is currently vacant land. The property owner is petitioning for annexation so that they can receive city services as well as access to city schools. This will be a proposed subdivision with a minimum of 110 single-family detached lots.
Is there any questions, Mr. Russell?
Ms. Nichols, have you talked to the developer? Are they moving in because of the new Grissom? Or what's, we hadn't seen this kind of development in South Huntsville in a long time?
They are interested in Grissom. Also, this property recently became, I guess, available on the market. The current property owners are interested in selling the property, and they have a current purchase agreement with the intended developer.
Thank you.
And I would comment also that there are a number of new residential developments that we're going to start seeing in South Huntsville because of the new Grissom. It works. We're also seeing a lot of the existing houses selling very quickly. Any other questions, Council? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13C is ordinance number 17-251, declaring certain equipment surplus and to be sold at public auction. This was introduced April 13th, 2017 at the regular council meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion from Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Culver. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13D is ordinance number 17-252, annexing 14.22 acres of land lying on the north side of Buford Drive and west of Old Big Cove Road, introduced April 13th, 2017 at the regular council meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Russell, second from the Chair. Ms. Nichols.
This annexation petition is approximately 14.22 acres. This is currently vacant farmland. This property will be in addition to the existing Overton subdivision, which is located on the west side of Old Big Cove and on the north side of Buford Drive. This property owner would like to annex so that they can have access to city services to develop these existing lots.
Are there any questions for Ms. Nichols, or any discussion? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 13E, ordinance number 17-253, annexing .99 acres of land lying on the north side of Kennedy Lane and east of Old Big Cove Road. This was introduced at April 13th, 2017, regular council meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Culver. Ms. Nichols.
This property is the third home that we've seen this year on Kennedy Lane. This property is located south of the previous annexation request. This property is on the east, oh, excuse me, on the east side of Old Big Cove Road and on the north side of Kennedy Lane. This is north of the River Ridge subdivision. The property owner would like to petition for city services.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now move on to item 14, new business items for introduction. 14A is the introduction of an ordinance concerning the annexation of 2.63 acres of land lying on the north side of Governor's West and north of Interstate 565. 14B is introduction of an ordinance concerning the annexation of 96.20 acres of land lying on the north side of Paul Drive and west side of Old Big Cove Road. 14C is an introduction of an ordinance concerning the annexation of 2.06 acres of land lying south of Hobbs Island Road and south of Railway Lane. 14D is introduction of an ordinance adopting and approving the standards of apprenticeship developed by the City of Huntsville Water Pollution Control Department for the position of water pollution control utility worker at the wastewater treatment plant. Those items will be considered at our regular May 11th council meeting. Moving on to item 15, new business items for consideration or action. We have a number of them. Are there any items any council member wishes to hold separately? Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Madam President. Would you please hold items 15F, as in Foxtrot, I as in India, S as in Sierra? Thank you, Madam President.
F, I, and S. Are there any other items any council member wishes to hold separately?
Madam President, I'd like to hold 15G, 15K, and 15Q and 15R.
Are there any items any council member wishes to hold separately? So, we are holding items 15F, 15G, 15I, 15K, 15Q, 15R, 15S. Is that correct?
That's correct.
We will move on then to the remaining items. 15A is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations. 15B is an ordinance amending budget ordinance number 16-659 by changing appropriative funding for various departments and funds. 15C is an ordinance amending budget ordinance number 16-659 by changing the authorized personnel strength in the various departments and funds. 15D is a resolution authorizing travel expenses. 15E is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreements with low bidders, meeting specifications as outlined in the attached summary of bids for acceptance. 15H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and BL Harbor International LLC for project managed services for the Redstone Gateway Infrastructure Project Number 71-17-SP25. 15J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number one to the agreement between the City of Huntsville, Alabama, and Root Match Software, Inc. 15L is a resolution authorizing city attorney to settle the workers' compensation claim of John Samuel Tucker. 15M is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer to invoke American Bank of Huntsville Letter of Credit Number 2013-044 for the village at Overland Cove subdivision. 15N is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke Avadian Credit Union Letter of Credit Number 201345 for the cottages at Indian Lake subdivision. 15O is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer to invoke Bryant Bank Letter of Credit Number 1235 for Overton subdivision. 15P is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a master software license services and support agreement between the City of Huntsville, Alabama, and Highland Software, Inc. 15T is a request for authorization advertising Phil One Regular Full-Time Cashier Position Grade One.
Madam President, I move for consolidation approval of 15A through 15E, 15H, 15J, 15L through P, and 15T.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Second.
Second from Mr. Kling. All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will proceed now to those items held separately. We will begin with 15F. 15F is a resolution to rescind the adoption approval of the acceptance of the low bid by A1 Cleaning Services for janitorial services as adopted by the Huntsville City Council by Resolution Number 17-295 on April 20, 2017. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
The second by Mr. Culver. Mr. Easter, we've just approved this a few weeks ago. Could you please help us understand what's going on?
Yes, the action before tonight is because the contractor that we awarded at last week's meeting notified the city on Monday that they had made an error in their bid, and they have pulled their bids that they cannot perform, otherwise they would lose money in performing the work. So, the next item after that, we're planning on awarding to the next bidder.
Are there questions? Mr. Kling.
When we have an agreement, whether it's a low-ball agreement, whether it's a mistake, don't we hold that vendor to the agreement that we have?
Well, I would have to rely on the legal to tell you how that will turn up. I know that, I believe in this case, there was a bid bond associated with the bid that they turned in, but I'm not sure exactly how you execute a bid bond related to this. They never performed any of the work. So, I'm not really sure. They've not, they didn't actually do any of the work. They weren't scheduled to do, start the project by the time they notified us.
Mayor Battle, would you like to add to that?
This is one of those cases where somebody missed a bid, they would lose money if they came in and did the job. You don't want them coming in trying to scrimp down to make money out of a losing bid. You'd much rather go on to number two and do it in a businesslike manner, so that you get the services that you need out of this. You could probably try to hold somebody's feet to the fire on this, but if you did, you'd end up probably with more problems than it's worth. So, that's the reason that we've gone to the second bidder and tried to just move along with this.
That is correct. And also, we did meet with the contractor twice and reviewed the work that he had proposed, and we do agree that he did miss the work, and we do believe it was an honest mistake.
Mr. Easter, my question would be, I understand that this bid was appreciably lower than the next responsible bidder. Should there have been something in our process that should have popped up some red flags and said, "Ooh, there's a problem here"? Do we ever, does that ever, do we ever check that?
Well, typically, what we do, whenever there's a big difference in pricing, we typically do a post-bid review with the contractor to verify that they have everything in their work. But you may remember, we had a special session. The timeframe to award that bid was much narrower than normal. Normally, we sat down with them, we go through everything, we verify it, but in this case, the time was so short that we weren't really able to do that till the very next day after the award last Thursday. So, we met with them on Friday, and then we met with them again on Monday morning after they notified the city, and we reviewed all the information he provided. But you're correct, his number was much lower than the only other bidder.
Are there any questions, comments? Mr. Culver.
Thank you, Madam President. So, is this just our protocol to move to the next responsive and responsible bidder, or do we start all over again? Does this particular company, are they interested in bidding, I guess, a more equitable bid?
Well, I'll tell you what we did. I did, I met with the procurement department, and they advised me what our options were. And at that time, there were three options. One of them was we could rebid, but keep in mind, as of last night at midnight, we no longer had janitorial services because the other contract ended. The other item is we could go to that bidder, since there was only one other bidder, we had the right to go to that bidder and negotiate a best and final price with them. So, we did. We met with the bidder on Monday afternoon, and they actually did reduce their price after we had some discussions with them about what was included and items that they thought may be too much. So, they gave us a reduction in the area of supplies and materials, and they also gave us a reduction in the area of the labor costs, which overall, the total savings that they gave us was $70,000 a year with their best and final. And so, we actually did get a reduction from them based on what they originally bid.
Just another question, kind of on a different note, but along the same lines. And it may be a rhetorical question, but we still, as a city of Huntsville, have employees who work in that industry. How practical is it for us to be self-contained as it relates to our janitorial and provide just part-time employment, you know, up to 30, 30 hours?
Well, that's a very good question. I can tell you, about four years ago, the city employed about 50 janitors. And over the last four years, through attrition, it has been a strategy to move our work to a subcontracted environment. And we, now, we are down to about nine employees, nine janitors, that's all that we have. And of course, that's all occurred through attrition. We've not laid anybody off. At the same time, we have, you know, been subcontracting the work out. So, looking at the numbers, and I'll tell you, I have looked at those, the price that you have before you is really a fair, reasonable price. We've added over a quarter million dollars of square footage in the last several years when you take into consideration some of the buildings that we have received. And then, you also take into consideration the savings that we have off the payroll, because basically, we were paying up to 50 janitors at one time, and we're down to nine. So, now, that money now is really funding this. So, it is my opinion that we move forward with this and award this bid, and it is a fair, reasonable price.
So, what, Madam President, so what you're, thank you, Madam President. So, what you're saying is that overall, you're saving money, although we're paying nine City of Huntsville employees in janitorial, but versus paying 50 employees and paying them the value of this particular contract, we are saving more money versus having 50 employees? Is that what I'm hearing?
That is correct.
And I might remind Council that, you know, it's not necessarily the hourly cost of the employee, especially with our employees, there's just a huge load on the back end, about a 40% load for retirement and for health insurance and for longevity pay and all the things that we have as benefits that in this case, we can get done by a contractor and with the contractor's work, it actually does save us money on the long term.
And Ms. Sergeant, was there anything you wanted to add?
No, I was here for finance procurement.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Kling.
I guess I have a legal question to ask our esteemed, distinguished barrister. Is it legal for us to drop a bid? Because we're supposed to be the advocates for the taxpayers, and the process is set up, we take the lowest bid that meets the specs. The guy made a mistake, maybe, you know, sorry, that's, he had a process, he had a business, he filled out the application. I didn't have anything to do with this application. In the past, we've held people's feet to the fires when they've submitted a bid and they claimed it was a mistake. Unfortunately, we had a golf course operator who did something similar, and he was able to get his terms readjusted. But bottom line is, we've got a, we've got a legal agreement, and it went through the process. We had a special session, which I guess there was some expense involved in just setting up the special session for that, you know. Is this legal for us to drop it?
Mr. Riley.
Well, when you say it's legal, yes, and I think there's a lot of things that go into this consideration, not the least of which is that we were in a need of getting a viable option for doing the cleaning of all of our properties. That may be why we were in the special session situation to begin with. I think there's value judgments that are made in these things, and, you know, there's old saying about trying to squeeze blood out of a turnip and such. I don't think we would have been moving forward in our situation here by pursuing legal action against this bidder who clearly made a substantial error in the calculations. It wouldn't be getting our buildings cleaned or anything of that nature. And I think we opted to go to the next best available option that we had. Certainly, we can explore if there are any options that may be available to us based upon this, but my off-the-cuff feeling at this point is that we are probably best served in this situation by proceeding forward as we are. I don't think that we necessarily make a judgment that we would want to go against a local company, which in fact, the winning bidder was, and try to extract blood from them for what appears to be an honest mistake, as Mr. Easter has said.
Can this turnip be prohibited from bidding on city business in the future, given this circumstance?
I don't know that there would be a mechanism for that to occur, and I don't know that it would necessarily be proper for us to do that, because even though a mistake may have been made, I'm confident that there are other aspects, when we awarded the thing to begin with, that they're a viable going business. So, I think we would certainly consider them, and I don't think there would be a need, you know, to exclude them from now on out for bidding on projects with us.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Are there any other questions or comments? Mr. Culver.
Thank you. Sorry to kind of hog the time here. Just one other quick question. The subsequent bidder, or the second bidder and final bidder, that we're going to use... Um, the subsequent bidder or the second bidder and final bidder, um, that we're gonna use, are they local? And if not, uh, will they employ local people? That's a rhetorical question. Will they take some of the other company's, uh, employees? And the reason I'm asking is because some of Kemp's and Sons' employees have contacted me, uh, regarding that matter.
Uh, y- uh, yes, uh, they are local, and it is my understanding they have had communications with some of the, uh, current employees, and they will be, uh, moving over to the new contract. And I would like to add one other, uh, comment, uh, for the record, just publicly, is the contractor that made the error, they are gracious enough to continue doing some work by work order. For these few days, it's gonna take the new contractor in order to, uh, gear up and get ready for the job. So, I, it's very honorable for this company to actually come in and agree to help us clean our buildings for the next three or four days. So that, uh, you know, the new contractor can come in and, uh, um, help, you know, take over the, the project. So, I, I think it was very honorable, and I wanna make sure that the council knows, uh, what, that he did do that.
Thank you, Mr. Easter. Any other que- comments or questions? All in favor of approving the contract, please indicate. Any opposed?
No.
Um, please note that Mr. Kling has voted no. Uh, the motion carries. Fifteen G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the low bidder Office Pride Commercial Cleaning Meeting specifications as outlined in the attached summary of bids for acceptance. Chair moves for approval?
Second.
Um, Mr. Easter, this is, uh, uh, obviously the contract with the folks who, the second bidder.
Yes, it is. This is the, uh, the next bidder that, uh, bid, uh, along with the, uh, the previous bidder, and it is our recommendation to move forward. They are, uh, scheduled and preparing to, or prepared to start the contract next week on May first.
Questions?
I don't wanna be sarcastic, and I, I don't mean it that way, 'cause, you know, this is where we're at right now. We're comfortable that the bid, everything, all this is in order and everything's in good shape for this.
We have met with them, we have done a post-bid, uh, review with the contractor. We have, uh, reviewed all the scope of the work, uh, all the expectations that we have, and, uh, yes, I feel comfortable with this, uh, this bid.
Any other questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Fifteen aye, thank you, Mr. Easter. Fifteen aye is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a reimbursable agreement between the City of Huntsville and Huntsville Utilities for relocation of utility facilities on private or public right-of-way work for Martin Road between Old Jim Williams and Zert Road. Project number seventy-one dash ten dash R D zero seven, formerly known as project number sixty-five dash ten dash R D zero seven. And L dot project number A C C A, A six zero one, six zero F, A, A trip, zero twelve. Chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Ms. Martin?
Yes, ma'am. This is a funding agreement between the City of Huntsville and Huntsville Utilities for relocation of existing gas mains associated with the Martin Road Phase One project, which goes from Old Jim Williams to Zert Road.
Questions for Ms. Martin or other discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Martin. Fifteen K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Forsight Incorporated for the engineering design services for the Burrit Overlook Venue located at thirty-one zero one Burrit Drive. Is there a motion?
Some, second.
Motion from Miss, from Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Kling. Um, Mr. Easter?
Yes, thank you. Uh, yes, this is, uh, it's a engineering, uh, design agreement. Uh, this is to, uh, design a two thousand to twenty-five, uh, square foot deck that'd be located up at Burrit. The contract amount is twenty-five thousand dollars, and it has to be, uh, the total project has to be complete by January of eighteen, and it's, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars. And they, uh, the Burrit Museum did fund this, uh, portion of the project a hundred percent.
Thank you. Are there questions? Discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Fifteen Q is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Raven Golf Construction, Inc. For an analysis of the renovation and operation of the Becky Pierce Municipal Golf Course. Is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Mr. Culver, second by the chair. Mr. Hamilton?
Yes, members of council, this is, uh, a consulting contract with Raven Golf. They are one of, uh, the entities that, uh, expressed interest in, uh, working with us to renovate and operate the golf course. Uh, as we've discussed quite a bit, there, there's still a good bit of question about whether or not we should have a golf course. And if so, what should, uh, the form of that golf course be? Uh, I think I'd previously briefed council that it was our intent to, uh, finish a study of the issue to, to bring options to you so we can decide what is the appropriate direction. Uh, we do anticipate that, uh, if we were to reopen the golf course, the renovations to do so would be multiple millions of dollars. Uh, and it's appropriate that we make that decision based on, uh, thorough analysis, uh, and that we contemplate what the alternatives might be. So, this contract is for twelve thousand five hundred dollars, uh, and where they will, uh, analyze two specific options related to the golf course itself. So, the layout, the condition of the fairways, the greens, those types of things. Uh, the golf course also has vertical structures. We're doing analysis of those internally. So, General Services is working analysis of the, uh, the vertical structures. Uh, so ultimately, uh, this contractor will bring us their analysis for their component of this overall study. Uh, and then we will bring, uh, bring you options, uh, as to what is the, we think is the best way ahead and, and what are the estimated costs associated with, with those various options. Uh, so, you know, one option is to renovate and open the, reopen the course in its current configuration. Another option we've asked them to explore is the, the feasibility of actually reducing the overall footprint of the golf course, thereby, uh, freeing up some land within John Hunt for other recreational purposes. Uh, and then we also will, uh, explore with you options of what, what would happen with the land if you chose not to reopen the golf course. Uh, so you'll have, uh, kind of those choices is what we anticipate the study will present. Uh, and we'll, uh, we'll present those to you and, and make recommendations on what, what we think the best way ahead is, uh, for the course. But, uh, Raven Golf are, you know, professional golf course, uh, builders and operators. Uh, and they will, uh, they will do that analysis and layout options for the golf course component.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Questions? Mr. Russell?
Madam President, uh, Mr. Hamilton, wha- what is the timeline on this?
Uh, they expect to be done with their study within, uh, about two weeks. So, I would, I would expect, uh, probably within thirty days, we're bringing you back a report.
And at that time in the thirty days is when you're gonna lay out what, what the administration thinks the options are?
Correct, that's what we anticipate.
And then you're gonna expect the council to choose one and move forward or move some way?
That, you know, exactly, uh, what and how you decide is, I think, is part of the discussion, how, how we need to do that. Ultimately, you know, any of these options are going to cost money, which, uh, obviously, uh, council, uh, solely has the authority to, for the expenditure of funds. Uh, so, yes, I, I, I do expect to, uh, uh, to bring you this. I, my expectation is that we explore the options with you. Certainly, uh, you take, uh, you know, whatever time you feel is, is necessary to, to contemplate those decisions. Uh, I think the, the next step would be a resolution directing the administration to pursue and, and, you know, finish, uh, fully vetting and laying out, uh, you know, the, the, whatever option, uh, is your preference. And then we put together the construction contract, something like that. So, this is, uh, this is one contract that will lead to other contracts. You know, ultimately, if we're gonna renovate the course and reopen it, there will be a, an operations, a construction and operations contract, uh, to, uh, to do that. If you choose to not reopen the golf course and do something else with it, then there certainly will be other design contracts and things associated with that, that reutilization.
And will Raven Golf, will they tell us that there is a market for this golf course? And one of the things I think the whole council struggles with is, we don't know how many people played there this year, how many people played there last year. We don't know the history of the golf course, and, and I think that'd be, uh, you may already know it, but that'd be in- information that we need to know to make a decision.
I, I agree completely. So, so part of the presentation will be that the history of the utilization and the numbers and, and, uh, Mr. Ivey has, has those numbers from, you know, the, the prior year op- uh, operations. And yes, I do anticipate that Raven Golf will, will offer us their assessment of the viability, the business side, the viability of the course.
And what about price control or price cap? I don't know what they used it, but I knew that used to be a big discussion among the council members is they wanted a cap on how high you could charge for a round of golf. Uh, will they make a s- uh, recommendation on that, or is that gonna be open to the council to determine?
So, yeah, I, I don't know that in this contract, they would come back with a specific, here's the price point we have to be at. That would really be an element of, uh, the operations contract that we would contemplate with them, uh, and, and that. So, that's where you would really get into the details of exactly what they would need, uh, in order to generate the revenues to keep the course open. I, I believe that was one of the challenges, and, and, uh, as we've discussed before, there were quite a few challenges with the, the previous operator. But I believe one of the challenges was, uh, in, in some cases, those price controls were probably too stringent and did not allow them to, to grow the revenue stream necessary to properly maintain the course. So, uh, you know, the, the number of rounds played declined significantly. Uh, you know, you could kinda get into a chicken or egg kind of argument on, on what happened there. We, we ultimately know that the course was not being properly maintained, uh, and that certainly contributed to the decline in the number of rounds being played. Uh, but, uh, you know, we, we will need to have a, a real, I think, open and honest discussion about what are the appropriate price points? How does that compare to the privately operated courses in our community? Uh, to what extent should government, uh, be in direct competition with the private market? And, and one, make sure that, you know, if we're doing it, we're delivering an appropriate public amenity to our community, but also, uh, not doing it in a way where we're undercutting private business. So, those are, those are, you know, hard decisions to make sometimes, and, uh, and we will certainly pull together as much analysis and data as we possibly can to present, uh, to you how that ought to occur. Uh, you know, I, I certainly don't expect that we would recommend that the, the prices are just open-ended and the operator gets to decide whatever they are. But at the same time, we need to make sure that any controls are in place or, or market-based and give that operator the opportunity to actually be successful.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Hamilton? Mr. Kling?
I, uh, I kinda agree with what Mr. Russell was saying, uh, especially if it turns out we're gonna have to put money into the golf course, that we should, uh, have some control over, uh, you know, what the, what the fees would be. And, uh, you know, making sure that, uh, we don't end up in a situation like we've had with the previous vendor. Uh, can, as part of this process, can the company look at, basically looking at the, the golf course as is, sprucing it up a little bit, but basically make it into a Chevrolet instead of putting millions of dollars, uh, to try to put it into a Cadillac type of configuration? But can they look at, this is what you have, you can do a little bit and you can get it open, you know, before the summer's out, basically as is?
So, yes, they will, they will basically be presenting to us the, the list of tasks that need to be performed and, and estimated cost to do that. Um, based on just initial assessments, that turned it into a Chevrolet option, as, as you say, um, is still quite a bit of money. And it's money that is not currently budgeted.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor of approving the contract, please indicate. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number fifteen R is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Lee Builders, Inc. To provide construction services for Fern Bell Park located on Sanders Road. Chair moves for approval?
Second.
Mr. Easter?
Yes, thank you. Uh, this is a, uh, construction contract with Lee Builders. This is to build, uh, Fern Bell Park, the two softball fields, along with the concession stand and other, uh, buildings that go along with it, pavilions. Um, it's, the price is one million four hundred and four thousand and thirty-six dollars. Of that, uh, uh, one hundred and ninety-four thousand four eighty-four is coming from the city school board.
Questions for Mr. Easter?
I have questions. Uh, and what is the timeline of this project?
Uh, uh, the contractor has a hundred and eighty days, uh, to perform his work.
And they'll start, if we approve it tonight, immediately, or will it start after baseball season, or when will?
No, it will start, uh, fairly immediately. The first thing we'll do is we'll, uh, ask for all their bonds and insurances, and they will be given a notice to proceed. Usually, that happens within a ten-day period. Once we give them the notice to proceed, that's when the actual construction period starts.
Yeah, I guess w- one of my questions or concerns tonight is, I, I remember when this was talked about years ago, then the school board came back and they didn't agree to what was agreed upon. Uh, where are we in? Uh, who said what, and, and are we getting our fair share?
Uh, yes, we are. I can tell you, we, as we went through the design process, we actually, the, the construction documents were a little different than we normally do. The construction documents were very clearly identified of what was city school board and what was, uh, the City of Huntsville's. And they were also actually priced separate. That's how I know exactly what these dollar values are between one and the other. And they have signed off on, on the, the work and the, the, their scope of work.
And, and I would assume the school board and the school system knows that this construction project's gonna happen and we're gonna work it out with them on how, so it doesn't affect school?
Yeah, uh, yes, they do. Uh, we've been in constant contact with the school board during the whole process, including after the bid. But they actually set in on all the construction meetings, the progress meetings, and, uh, we've also been in communication with them since the bid was opened.
Thank you, 'cause I don't think we can take any more traffic problems around the Martin Road area?
Amen to that. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Motion carries. Fifteen S is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a special employee agreement between the City of Huntsville and Larry Conwell. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Culver. Um, Mr. Cook?
Council members, uh, I believe most of you, especially the sen- senior members, will recognize Mr. Conwell is, uh, recently retired from finance. He has been the, um, rate model watcher for W P C for probably the last thirty years. And his guidance is invaluable to W P C as we move forward.
Any questions for, uh, Mr. Cook?
Yes, I'm, I'm trying, um, thank you, Madam President. I'm trying to draw the, the dots here, connect the dots. So, typically, um, City of Huntsville employee leaves a particular department, and if they come back as a, um, contract employee or something of that nature, usually they work in that same division. But you're saying because of the work that he has provided to your organization, that you need him directly with your organization?
Yes, he was not contracted, uh, for the City of Huntsville when he retired, and he had been watching the rate model that all the decisions W P C are made upon, that, that y'all review every year. And, uh, I quickly put forward a contract to get him down there to not only, um, help along my young accountant that's recently employed with City Huntsville, but give us the guidance and the history of that rate model, uh, as we move forward. Uh, you will remember, councilman, that the, we stopped rate increases about two years ago. And so now, it's a, a game every year of watching and making sure that we're where we need to be rate structure-wise. And that particular model is what drives everything. The same way y'all watch sales tax coming in, we watch the rate model.
Okay, and, uh, you didn't have to fight Ms. Sargent to get it?
No, sir. Although, I would say that, uh, another function of Mr. Conwell is he's basically a Wikipedia of knowledge for all of the departments. We get phone calls from every different department, the days that he's in, asking historical questions about one thing or the other.
Okay, great. And certainly no questions regarding his abilities. I've known him forever.
Yes, sir.
But it, I believe this is at least my first time experiencing, uh, comeback of an employee in a different division from what they were accustomed to working in. So, that was the reason for my inquiry.
Yeah, it, it, it come together as a culmination for us, councilman, where we were implementing units. Uh, not only that, we were bringing in the work order system and a lot of things that we had never done, or actually, we had done, but we had done them with about five different programs, and we have brought all that together. I hope in the next couple of months, we're ready to invite you down and show you seamlessly how we're bringing stuff in now into our inventory warehouse, buying it with the same finance system, bringing in the inventory, and then dispatching out to the different departments from there in a very orderly fashion.
Great, great, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Keith?
Quick question. I know you, I just heard you mention it. I just wanted to get a quick reference from my own knowledge. When you said you put together the contract, is that in step in tandem with Byron, or you yourself put together the contract? I guess valuing his service to you, is that our argument of like arbitration between him and you, or does he actually have to go through, um, H R with us?
Well, it is vetted by HR to make sure we're following all the, HR and legal, excuse me, to make sure that we are following all the criteria with state retirement and everything else. But basically every retired contract employee at the city, it's basically a carbon copy of the same contract.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our business items. We will go on, go on to item, do we have T? Does T help separately? Okay. Item 16, legal department items and transaction. 16A1 is an ordinance authorizing vacation of a utility and drainage easement lots 26 and 27, Minetown on the park, phase six subdivision.
Move to approve the ordinance?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Culver. Is there any discussion, questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 16B1 is a utility and drainage easement from Jeff Benton Development, Inc., acquired March 31, 2017.
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Kling.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to item 17, non-roster communications from the public. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council? Ms. Reed?
Thank you, I appreciate it. I know you're supposed to talk about something that's not on this agenda, but the golf course really concerns me. I don't know what the contract was. I think he said $500. How much is, was the contract or did you tell it and I missed it for the analysis? How much is the contract?
The contract I meant was $12,500.
Well, you can tell me when I get through, but I would like an answer.
$12,500.
Half the time I don't get my answers anymore. I'd like to get some of them.
Ms. Reed, it was $12,500.
How much?
$12,500.
Oh, so it's a little bit more than, to tell us what to do with the city. We keep getting contracts out here, but the way I read and what I'm hearing from Mr. Hamilton, we got better plans for that to go with John Hunt Park. So I hope you, councilmen, sit up and listen to that. People are stopping me that used to golf over there, having to go out of town somewhere else and fussing. We don't have anything. We're trying to take the quality of life from the people of the city of Huntsville. We've shut the jam down and you got a lot of nonprofits out here that you spend money on. I don't see you questioning any of them and you worried about a few tax dollars? Whoever this is that's working with you and not working with these golfers or this city council, I don't like the way y'all do business. I just don't. Did you put that out for bid to get this man? You tell me all that when I sit down. Was that put out for bid to come in here and tell us what it would take to bring the golf course up to par so we'll have something to do for the people in this city? I think that's what we need to do. Anyway, I'm back to pennies is still standing. I'd like to know the cost on that someday. You said $2 million? It'd be more like $10 million. Go out there and look at that place. It's really, it's really bothers me. I want to thank you though for saving the schools and I want to ask Mr. Kling, is that meeting with the school board member and Dr. Aiken, is that public or is that, you can answer directly, is that public or just, is that just with you all? Because Dr. Aiken is just not, I'm trying to keep him out of politics. I tried to keep the other one out of politics, but he got right in the middle of it and got caught in it and it got him out of town. I tried to keep Wardiski out, but he wouldn't listen to me. He got right in the middle of it and done everything y'all wanted him to do and the school board. But Dr. Aiken, he's not going to be that easy to move around, I don't think. I've met with him. He cares. The word care, it's this word. But anyway, and you paid six, you bought 60 acres, Bill Kling says we keep it in the city. You bought 60 acres, all of you did, out in Limestone County for roads. I've got to find out a little bit more about that because the state didn't seem to know about that deal when I brought that up with them at the MPO meeting, so I need to look into that a little bit more. I'm not getting information. I used to, Mayor Battle, because I can't get in city hall.
Thank you.
I'd be making some meetings, so you'll pretty soon find out.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Your time is up. Mr. Kling, would you like to announce again the time for your meeting?
That is a, well, it's a, it's a West Huntsville meeting. It has been communicated through numerous neighborhood associations. It's been communicated on the internet, on the city website and the district newsletter I have is going out, has it mentioned. But it is very much open to the public. Walker McGinnis, I thought it'd be a good thing for folks to get a chance to see the new school. Dr. Aiken and I believe Mayor Battle are going to be there and you're welcome to come, Ms. Reed. As far as Limestone County, I think we can put that in one word, jobs.
And date, time and place for that meeting again? I think was the question.
It is May the 9th at 5:30 PM at Morris, the new Morris School, K through 8.
Thank you very much. Pastor Johnson, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Pastor TC Johnson, 1800 Sparkman Drive, Huntsville, Alabama. The irony of the night, I heard the gentleman talking about speeding, speeding, speeding in this community. I bought you some citation statistics that you gave me last time I was here and I was struggling because that zip code I believe is 35763. I believe it's that zip code. Not one citation was given in that zip code. Not one. In fact, of the history of me checking this and getting the statistics, I'm thinking about moving over there. No citations are given in that community, not one, not one. In other zip codes, we get citations and you know I'm complaining about several. You know that. You've heard that before. That's not new for you. In that zip code where the gentleman said people speed, not one citation. When I looked at the income in that zip code, wow, it's a lot of money over there. I may not be able to move over there, so it seems like we police in areas differently based on poverty and wealth and also based on race. It just seems like, I know we don't do that because we're Huntsville, Alabama, we don't do stuff like that. And Mayor, I appreciate what you said, reference to resourcing out to try to save money. But what you did was, in fact, not consider the people who are employed at those levels are low-income people already. Low-income, this is a $1.4 million contract, 50 employees would be about $28,000 a year, which is less than half the median income and that's without retirement and all the other stuff and taxes come out. These are your people. These are people who, who may not have the high education or achievement that we, some of us do in income. They have families, they spend all of their money. They, they are the ones, according to statistics, who are consumers. My prayer is that every now and then, if it means spending a few more tax dollars, we can control the destiny of those who are at the lower edge of the run, rounds of our community, that we would think along those lines. We save money here, but when it comes down to other things, we don't mind dishing out money. But these are our people. You might say, well, they should have done this, they should have done. That's not the case. Jesus said it this way, you will have the poor with you always. But in this resourcing out, just like the one in Huntsville, you told us that, they said we would save money, which we didn't. In fact, we gave them more after a round of things. May I have one more minute, please?
Yes.
Yes. Pastor Johnson, one more minute.
I know it's an oversight, but by doing what we did, contracting this out and taking them off the city, I understand that's good management. But in my line of work, I have to think about people. I have a whole wall that goes up to for just the employee. We don't get much income, but I ensure that they have benefits. Can't pay them much, but they have benefits and they have a job. And my heart's desire for you is in the coming days, these people who would do those mopping the floors and cleaning your bathroom, if you wanted good, those are your people. They're low-income already and we could have helped them tonight, but we didn't.
Thank you, Pastor Johnson. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
Can we make sure that we clarify that? We had no, nothing to do with letting people go tonight. This was simply taking, picking up a contract. We had a contract out there for janitorial services in the city of Huntsville. It was not a contract to hire people so that we could provide for jobs and everything else. It was a contract only for that. Nobody was let go in that whole process. We went through natural attrition and got down to where we now have 11 janitorial workers in the city of Huntsville, not 50 that we had early on. But it was a natural process. Nobody was given a pink slip, nobody has been laid off. We try to make sure that we take care of every, every person who's an employee of the city of Huntsville and every person in the city of Huntsville. That's our job and that's what we do. But we also have that same duty to make sure that as we do the business of the city, we do it in a business-like manner. And that business-like manner says that you go out and you look for a contract. If you need janitorial services, you go for a contract and try to make sure that you do those contracts in a business-like manner. We did a very good business-like manner in this and I think that Mr. Easter and his department should be congratulated. One, one contract did not work. We let the person out of that contract. We let them move along. We went to the secondary contract and the secondary contract is the one that can provide employment. That's the business of the city. You have to go through that business process. If you've never been in business before, you have to go through that business process. I hired people in the city of Huntsville for years and years in the restaurant business and they were low-end workers and low-income workers. And it was one of those things that is that low-income workers, you felt responsible for them, you worked with them, you tried to teach them how to be a better employee. Many of them were first-time employees and it's very important to us that we try, each one of us, to make, to help someone get better. But through this process, this was a pure business process and a pure business contract. And the pure business contract was not to let anyone go, but just to make sure that we provided services at the best price that we could for the city of Huntsville. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Battle, for sharing that. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Mr. Wiley?
I just wanted to thank you, all of you. You're doing a great job and I haven't been watching TV much, but I turned on channel 25-5 and you guys all look really good on TV. And some of you can sing. I saw the Huntsville City School song. Some of you can sing, not all of you, but a few of you can hold a note. I didn't mean to sound combative earlier, I was just asking for clarification. But I wanted to address a couple of things really quick. The stove factory, I know it's proposed to be annexed in the future and I wanted to talk about walkability and I think what's happening in 4th District is really good and hopefully it'll spread to places that have been ruined by overpasses because I think that's our problem here is we have, well, part of them. We don't have enough jobs in the city limits that employ enough people and we have, an interesting thing in 4th District is we have a large amount of old buildings that are being repurposed. But they originally employed all of those houses and all those families around them and that's why those houses were built there. And I think instead of, you know, getting companies to come into the area and giving them sweet deals on tax-free land or however we work it out when we romance people into the area, we put them in the neighborhoods where people will be able to walk to work. And the problem with the parking and the schools, the thing is, is if the schools stay in the neighborhoods and people can walk to work and walk to schools, we solve all those problems. So, you know, light, clean manufacturing would be great in 4th District. And I know that there's already plans and sometimes the plans get ahead of the, you know, I don't know, maybe ideas or however we work it. I'd like to see how many people are employed by these future plans. Restaurants, I worked in restaurants for years. It's not something you want to do every day. Maybe some people love it. I didn't. I did it for a very long time and I worked my way up and it's a grind and it means on Mother's Day, you're there and on every holiday, you're there. And if somebody doesn't show up, you're there. And if you're the boss, it's even worse. So putting more restaurants isn't necessarily, you know, something that everybody wants to do because we are the lower income and I don't want to get priced out of my neighborhood. And I know a lot of people over there don't. So putting a company in the neighborhood we could walk to would be great and schools where we can walk to them and maybe looking at a state level at the daycare laws because there's a lot of single moms trapped in the projects and we're going to disperse those and that's why I ask, what are we doing with the people that are in these places that we're going to move? Maybe it'd be easier if we don't spread around a lot of unemployment and homelessness and we maybe put some jobs there because we are a zone county in some of these places and we annex them to the city. That's it, really. You guys are doing great and I just wanted to tell you that. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Is there? Thank you, Mr. Kling. We are adjourned.